All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our Tuesday, March ninth, Council Agenda Session. Now I'll call this meeting to order. Could I get a motion on the minutes, please?
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second with no objection. The minutes will stand as recorded. We do have one ordinance on final read this afternoon. Any questions or comments concerning it? I won't have the clerk read that. If not, we'll move on to resolutions under economic and community development. Madam Clerk, please read seven A, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into a premises use agreement with Rivermont Youth Athletic Association, Inc., and substantially the form attached for the use of athletic fields and buildings located on a portion of tax parcel number one eighteen K A zero zero nine at ten ninety-six Lupton Drive for a term of four years for annual rent in the amount of one dollar.
Questions or comments? All right, got the thumbs up. Seven B, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to utilize four hundred thousand dollars in Community Development Block Grant Cares Act funding to provide assistance to eligible landlords with vacant units to complete maintenance and minor repairs of up to four thousand nine hundred dollars per rental unit to enable quick occupancy by low to moderate income individual or household to support the City of Chattanooga's response to rental housing availability issues related to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Councilman Ledford.
Chairman, this isn't related to this item, but I know we had talked earlier about some versions not matching up. I have on our tonight's agenda, after the mayor's office ordinance, a planning item, A, that does not showing up on our agenda session copy. And we will be hearing that case in Planning and Zoning Committee today. And just to reference it, it is item, planning item six A. And I would be asking for a deferral until next week, as we will hear that case today, and we will have an alternate version.
That item is under my planning and zoning committee.
Okay, yeah, yeah, it is in planning. That's the only item we have today. But I'm just looking at our agenda session versus our council six o'clock agenda session.
Oh, okay.
And it's not on the three thirty agenda session. So I just wanted to bring that up, but I will be asking for it.
It's at the end of that.
Is it?
It says, look, look under planning and zoning.
Page six.
I might be missing.
You, yeah, I was missing, I was missing some pages earlier.
Yeah, I thought you said you were missing some pages. I might be missing some pages as well now that I am.
Yeah, okay.
I think we covered it. Thank you. We'll come planning and zoning.
All right. All right, seven C, please.
Resolution authorizing the Chief Human Resources Officer to enter into an agreement with Johnson and Associates, Inc. for third-party administration of injury-on-duty occupational health programs for initial term of two years and twenty-two days with renewal options for three additional one-year periods for a vendor services fee cost not to exceed one hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and one dollars per year with estimate claim payments on behalf of the City of Chattanooga at two million three hundred thousand dollars per year with a contract, with a total contract payment not to exceed two million four hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and one dollars per year.
All right, any questions or comments? Very well. Seven D, please, under information technology.
A resolution authorizing the Chief Information Officer to enter into a one-year agreement with Cornerstone On Demand, Inc. for the learning management system software and support to be used by the city's Human Resources Department for an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents.
Chair Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a few questions about this in our last meeting, and I believe I got all of my questions answered, but I'm wondering if we could have Chief Roddick come in for just a moment, because one of the main purposes of the system, as I understand it, has to do with the promotionals of our sworn officers or our sworn personnel. And just wondering if he can confirm that for us, please.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you bring in Chief Roddick, please?
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm not allowed to bring him in.
Is he not letting you?
Give me just. Oh, yeah, okay. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, sir. Good afternoon, Council.
Vice Chair.
Hey, Chief, just real quick, one of the questions, or actually, it wasn't even a direct question, other than asking who is using this system and, you know, whether it was the right thing to put into place right now, not knowing what the new administration may, what direction they may want to go with HR. However, knowing or being informed that one of the main purposes of this system was for promotions that take place with our sworn personnel, I just wanted to confirm with you that that is the case, and it is definitely something that you intend on using and continue to use moving forward.
Yes, sir. Having conducted an assessment center with a hard copy professional portfolio versus the ability for this LMS system to allow our applicants in all ranks to electronically upload, for lack of a better term, documentation of training, D two-fourteens, promotional statements, whatever it is that we're requiring relative to qualification and selection for that next rank, to do it electronically versus submitting hard copy is much easier, specifically with the fact that we generally contract with an external assessment group, like IO Solutions was the company that held our last one. This allows them to review that material remotely instead of trying to figure out a way to get hard copy documentation either off-site, or they bring someone in for the review of all of those files. So the LMS system is much better. It's much more efficient, especially in today's climate where that distant review is just going to be a little bit more applicable, if that makes sense, Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, that's all I needed to know, Chief. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Vice Chair, I guess you can excuse our guest. Thank you, Chief. Okay, I believe we're ready for seven E. Madam Clerk.
Resolution authorizing the Chief Information Officer to enter into a blanket one-year contract with Carisoft to begin April one, twenty twenty-one through March thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, with four optional twelve-month renewals for document signing software to be used with Oracle AST application for use citywide for an annual amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Any questions or comments? All right, F, please.
Resolution authorizing a spend limit increase for the existing contract with KCI Technologies to provide city work, immigration consulting services, and support P O five-five-zero-two three-one, representing a total increase of fifty thousand dollars for the remainder of the current contract, beginning contract year July seventeen, twenty eighteen, through July seventeen, twenty twenty-one, from two hundred and twelve thousand sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents to two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars sixteen ninety-five.
Councilwoman Burz.
Yeah, I have some questions about that. I'm not sure who could best respond.
Let me see if we're, Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, bring in Brent Messer.
Got it.
We'll go from there.
Greetings.
Brett.
Hi, Brent. Talk to me about this. What does this mean in English?
Let me pull it up. Which one are we talking about? Which number?
Seven F, resolutions, under information technology.
Sorry, I'm having some computer difficulties. Can you believe that? The CIO's having computer
Who's gonna help you?
The case. Hold on, let me call the tech support line.
Computer problem seemed to be an underlying theme this afternoon.
Yeah, it has. It's been. All right, that is, okay, that's for City Works, for Land Development Office.
Okay. All right, so, thank you for that, but tell you what, my question.
What, yeah.
Uh. All right, I've got a couple of things that aren't jiving. It says for the remainder of the current contract, beginning July seventeen, twenty eighteen, through July. So, all right, have I got this correct? We had a, a three-year contract with them that ends July seventeenth, twenty twenty-one?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, and we need fifty thousand more, perhaps?
Yeah, it's for the expansion of City Works for Public Works. I said LDO, I'm sorry. It was Public Works.
For Public, yeah, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm saying, what I'm wondering is why would we do it this way? As opposed to coming to council if you need it, or is this a, is this a, or as you need it?
I believe it is because we do need.
Your spending limit increase, you want to, you want to increase your spending limit?
Correct.
And, all right, and in, I'm not sure if there's a contract for X number of dollars, why you would be spending any more than that.
Well, typically, what we do is, if it's a blanket like that, is with KCI, because I think we have other software with them as well.
Is a blanket, okay.
If we've gone over the limit, and if we buy this, it's going to put us over that limit. That's the reason why we want to increase it.
Okay, so this is a blanket contract for a number of things, or as needed, and it's not going to be enough for the term of the contract?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You good, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Brent while we've got him on this, on this item? All right, Mr. Vice Chair, you can excuse our guest. Madam Clerk, if you would, seven G, please.
Resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Joseline Loza and Deion Jennings to the Library Board of Directors.
Councilman Mitchell? You're muted, sir. I know you're making a lot of great points, but you're muted.
Well, I'm not making any points yet, but it has to do with F instead of G. So we can return to that, and we gave the chief an opportunity to better explain D. I'm wondering if councilperson Burz would find some comfort if we brought in Bill Payne to try to better describe what they needed the extra fifty thousand dollars for outside of the original contract, and let him take a crack at it.
Yeah, that, that, that would be great, if you're asking me. That, that would be great. It's, the way this thing is written is a little odd.
Yes, I agree.
So I'm just trying to figure out what it is.
Okay, do we need to, do we need to bring in Mr. Payne? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'd like to.
Sure. Mr. Vice Chair, Bill Payne, please.
And keep our fingers crossed.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Payne.
Good afternoon.
We're looking at half, Mr. Payne, and I'm wondering if you could shed a little more light than we received before on why we are, are you increasing the service? Are you, have you found something that you think would add to what your efforts are? What are the reasons for this extra fifty thousand dollars?
This is actually tied in with a couple of things, and I'll be happy to get more detail if my answers right now are not, are not detailed enough. But we currently use City Works across many different divisions for both work order management, as well as inventory control and in our tool room. And part of our facilities section, as well as, as well as some other divisions, are implementing some new sections. So we had done some, some earlier rollout in our facilities and parks sections a couple of years ago, and it's necessary for us to make some changes to the way that our facility section is working. And KCI is, is the authorized vendor for that, and so they are, they are, they are working to make those, make those changes. And so we're just needing, we have budget available in order to be able to pay for it. We're just, we're just needing the authorization. And just, as I understand it, the blanket contract spend limit just needs to be increased to allow for us to be able to go ahead and get this work completed.
Okay, I'm seeing some heads nod.
Yeah, I'm good. It, it was just a little odd looking. So you need, you need fifty thousand dollars more on a blanket contract because you're redoing stuff, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. All right, Mr. Vice Chair, you can excuse our guest. Council, if you would, pull up your purchasing items for this afternoon. There are a few, and let me know if you have any questions regarding any of those. Councilman Ledford, did you get your questions answered as it pertains to our purchasing questions?
I'm good, sir. Thank you very much for asking.
Anyone else with questions about our purchasing? All right, I am seeing no hands at this time. If you would, pull up your March sixteenth agenda. Any questions or concerns on your March sixteenth agenda? All right, see no hands. If you would, pull up future considerations. And let me know if there are any items, anything under Public Works and Transportation will be handled by Councilman Mitchell.
Mr. Chair, if there are any questions on the future considerations that we can address in committee, it'd be nice to hear them now so that Transportation and Public Works can be ready.
Okay. I'm seeing no hands, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that brings us down to departmental reports, and we do have a report by the police this afternoon. So if, Mr. Vice Chair, you'd bring in Chief Roddick again for our.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure that you know that it's our clerk that is actually handling that job so wonderfully this afternoon.
Oh, okay. She's, she's got the controls back.
She does. Lots of it.
Of course. All right, Chief, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon again, Council. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Councilman Gilbert, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I did. I was going to wait. I acted too slowly on resolution on the Public Works. It had District Five on it, and then it was Max of me. I was curious what that was about.
We'll cover that in, let's cover that in Public Works Committee.
On the future considerations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I see the one you're speaking of. Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll cover that in future, I've been in a committee. Sorry, Chief.
I know. Thanks for your time, Council. I'm going to attempt to share a screen for PowerPoint. So let's see if we can work through this. Let me know if you all can see the PowerPoint.
Not at this time. Huh?
All right, we'll keep working on it. Stand by just a second. I do not know why it is not coming up, Council. I apologize. Give me just a moment. It is showing on my side, but it is not coming up on yours.
No, sir. Mr. Vice Chair, any ideas?
Chief, if you, is it something you can email to me and see if I can get to work, sir?
Here we go.
There it is.
All right. How about now?
Got it.
Got it. That's the miracle for today, that I actually worked technology correctly. So I'm going to start here. Thank you all for your time. I will get right into it in, in honor of your time. As always, with General Police Department, I will share the three pillars of the Police Department and the work that we have been doing in each, with the first of those being community and problem-solving policing. And the area that you may have seen us start to spread the message even farther is our lock it, hide it, hold it campaign. As you can see from the numbers on the screen, in twenty twenty, half of all the stolen vehicles in Chattanooga had their keys or the actual key fob inside the vehicle. We're on track already in January and February of twenty twenty-one. That number's up to sixty percent of those vehicles. So that also includes over into firearms stolen. We had three hundred and ninety-one stolen from unlocked vehicles in twenty twenty. We're at sixty percent for the year-to-date so far. We realized that we needed to get the message out as broadly, loudly, as frequently as we could within the city, to lock your vehicles, hide your valuables, or hold your property instead of leaving it in your car, i.e. lock it, hide it, hold it. And we reached out, and Chattanooga responded the way it always does when that public-private partnership, and we have a list below of community partners that have joined us. We are getting information up through Republic Parking. You will see some wraps on some local buses through Carta. Vision Hospitality Group has helped us get the message up into our area hotels. CBL has given a signage at malls. Reagan Outdoor Advertising, you'll notice, is up on upwards of fifty billboards across the city on the electronic billboards. Chamber of Commerce, Chattanooga Tourism, North Shore Merchants Collective, they have all helped us continue to get this message out, and we're going to continue to find other partners. And any partners listening can hear the sound of my voice, and you would like to help us get information out. The simple act of, don't leave a firearm in your car, lock your car and take your keys with you, could bring down crime dramatically within the City of Chattanooga. We also have participated in a few front porch lineups. Obviously, COVID has restricted our ability to get into some of those settings, but as things have lifted, vaccinations available for first responders, we're able to get into one of our local partners, which is Amerimed. We partnered with them for almost a year now to where, instead of when an individual is in crisis, being transported by a Chattanooga police officer in a police cruiser, which can raise anxiety and tensions on an already anxious and tense scene, we're able to call for, and Amerimed responds with trained medical providers, and we have that individual transported by ambulance. We're able to provide services and some de-escalation in a much easier setting than the back of a patrol car. We're grateful for that partnership. They were grateful as well. We got our officers on a large lineup into their facility, had some other partners in the community come along, and it was, it was a very good day, all three shifts, to help our, our officers and Amerimed spent some time together in this partnership. I participated in the Special Olympics Polar Plunge. As you can see, that photograph was taken after ten of us jumped into water. I think it was around forty-something degrees. If none of you have ever experienced that, don't. It's dramatic, is the only way that I'll, I'll sum that up. But we also raised about a thousand dollars for Special Olympics. And if you'll notice, the young lady in the center of the picture peeking between everyone, that is Chief Dan Avon's little sister from the Big Brothers Big Sisters program. She was fantastic enough to come help jump in the water with us. It was an absolute great day. We look forward to continuing our partnership with Special Olympics on some more events as we move through the year. We did a filler cruiser food drive, where we partnered with the Speedway on Bonnie Oaks Drive, our Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, CPD, and other community members. We filled the police cruiser and a second vehicle with nine hundred pounds of food, which was delivered directly to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank, that helps approximately five hundred families in need, especially right now in this critical time. And we are working to set up another event like that, so we can continue that partnership, continue providing those that need it. Into the next pillar, intelligence-led policing. To remind everybody of some of the recent press releases we sent out, we were a recipient of a seven hundred thousand dollar federal grant that makes Chattanooga one of only twenty-six cities in the country to receive this grant to become a crime gun information center. So that partnership with the ATF is going to provide some more supplemental equipment, upgrade other items that we have, move into some objective technology and data review of how we're doing things, what can we do better, with an independent data collection source as well. That is a three-year grant, and it does involve some partnerships with some other law enforcement partners as well. So that collaborative impact model is getting some outside funding and support through BJA. And then the Real-Time Intelligence Center, just to bring one example to highlight what the funding that this council and Mayor Burke's administration has moved us towards relative to the public safety cameras. If you notice the photographs on the right, this was an incident that occurred in our community, where the individual in that car placed adults and children that were in proximity to his actions at great risk. That suspect, whose name is listed there, he was a prohibited possessor, which means he cannot be in possession of a firearm. He was a multi-time convicted felon, and at this time, he actually had outstanding warrants for aggravated assault, domestic violence. He received additional charges relative to this event, which was captured on your public safety cameras, and it just goes as an example with multiple others that we encountered through the year, what a value that those cameras add to the Police Department, and how much safer they make the community. And we're looking forward to getting more of those up as we move into our next year budget. And then in focus deterrence, in recent months, we've received concerning reports from individuals that live, are raising families on certain block sections of Fagan Street, as well as our own observations, either through public safety cameras or your district cars. As a result of that, we sat down, created a team of investigative units, neighborhood policing, our Arctic Investigators and Technology, some of our federal partners in code, city codes enforcement, and went down to address what was being observed. As you see, listed in the bullet points, we had nine individuals arrested with some type of connection to either resale amounts of narcotics, firearms, one of which was stolen, gambling devices, and basically just causing a, an unnecessary and unwelcome presence in a certain area of Fagan Street. So we hope that that helps make that part of our city safer. We'll keep an eye on it to see if it starts to come back up. But this was an excellent example of how partnerships can make our community safer throughout Chattanooga. We had a multi-state robbery arrest program. We focused on multi-jurisdictional investigation between local and federal partners, and in a combination of our robbery units, FBI Task Force, the FBI, fugitive U.S. Marshals, as well as other agencies in two states, we made an arrest of an individual by the name of Alondo Johnson. He was arrested in Georgia, in Georgia in February of twenty-one. Multiple firearms recovered, which link back to one of the robberies here. As you can see, the list of cases so far, six business robberies in Chattanooga, ten in Georgia, one in North Carolina, and some other ones within the state of Tennessee and Florida. We will be taking him federal, but those types of partnerships can show, and as we talked about, small numbers of individuals drive large amounts of violence or crime within a community. This was a perfect example of how one individual committed almost as many as twenty robberies at this point that we connected to his actions. And then lastly, firearms collected, just wanted to give you an update on firearms collected through up to twenty twenty. You can see our numbers trending similar with eighteen and nineteen on the amount of times that attending a police officer has interrupted a crime or a gun in our community. Some of those are found property. Many of those are connected to a crime where your officers are standing between that gun and our community itself, and placing those things into our property division, so they aren't out there on the streets. And the last part, to give you good news, is we had three of our investigators recognized by the Director's Office of the Federal Bureau of Investigation for exceptional casework, including multiple arrests at the federal level, and one of them included exceptional work on a case involving exploited children. Now, the officers that receive the awards do tie into some federal task forces. So we wanted to be able to showcase them, show appreciation for what they did, but we also have to respect the fact that sometimes they work in somewhat of an undercover role. So their face being on broadcast may not be the best thing. So we applied a cat filter so that they are able to stand here and be recognized for their awards, but not give up their identity. For the record, they are not cats. They are excellent investigators. That is your department report from your Chattanooga Police Department, and I stand by for any questions.
All right, Chief, you mind taking your screen down? There you go. Any questions for Chief Roddick? Councilman Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, absolutely great report, Chief. Just two comments. Cat's a pretty good investigator, so I think you filtered it well. The other thing is just, I hope Dana's little sister is in your recruitment portfolio, because if she has the courage to do that, that's certainly one trait we need in our police department. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Amen, Councilman. Amen, Councilman.
Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chair. I'm still laughing from Councilman Mitchell. Chief, what can we do further when talking to constituents about leaving firearms and vehicles? We're hearing the numbers are up already from stolen firearms and vehicles. Is there a penalty for that? For having a firearm stolen? Is there? What suggestions can we do as council representatives in our community besides getting on social media like Nextdoor and in keeping encouraging the lock it, hide it, hold it program, which I can tell you Captain Gibbons does a fantastic job reaching out to thousands of District Four residents, and I guess Charlie Spector Nor. What else can we do to encourage people? I know people that it's happened to, and I'm I'm open to suggestions.
I'm right there with you, Councilman. I'm open to suggestions as well. There currently is not any legislation that would make the irresponsible security of a firearm unlawful. I think as you, and I'm sure the rest of council and members of this department and other members of our community are doing, is have the hard conversation. A car is not a holster. That's not where you leave a firearm. Impress upon other individuals, we have literally recovered a firearm, called the owner and said, we have found the firearm that was stolen out of your vehicle. And the response invariably is, great, when can I get it back? And our response is, as soon as the homicide trial is over with.
Wow.
Say it. Yes, let that sink in. We had one night not too long ago, I had three firearms stolen out of three unlocked vehicles in the city of Chattanooga. That is three more firearms on the streets of this city that your officers may have to face, that your community members and neighbors may have to encounter. So I don't know any other way other than being direct, almost buddying up against roots, sir. Because at this point, we need to be more responsible about how we secure our firearms, especially in an unlocked car with the keys in it. To me, it's just unconscionable. So I appreciate the hard conversations that I'm sure you all engage in. I will continue to engage in those as well as Captain Gibbons, other members of this department of, we've just got to do better, sir.
Well, we stand with you to help make it better.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Yes, sir. Any other questions for Chief Roddy? Chief, great job, sir. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you, sir. If anybody needs it, the cat picture is available. Just email me. I'll get it to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, you can excuse our guest. All right, that concludes this portion of our agenda session. At this time, we'll go to Public Works and Transportation. I'm going to call on Councilman Mitchell to lead us in that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to start with transportation today. We have a couple of resolutions for today. So is it Mr. Bailey?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody against approving the minutes? All right, we'll move along. Thank you, Council.
Sir.
You bringing in someone?
Yes, John Bailey.
John.
John.
How you doing today, John?
I'm doing great, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thanks for having me.
Thank you very much. Let's go into resolutions for today. 7M, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Transportation to approve change order for Bard Design Solutions, Inc. relative to contract number T14021101 River Walk for extension for an increased amount of $53,310 for a revised contract amount of $301,480.
Mr. Chair, he can continue on with the next one, and then he can give us a full report on where we are with this project that has taken us a long time to get here, but I'm glad we're here.
All right, man. That sounds great. In, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Transportation to enter into an agreement with Franklin Group LLC relative to contract number T14021201 for construction services associated with River Walk for extension in the amount of $2,461,979.60 with a contingency amount of $246,197.96 for a total amount of $2,708,177.56.
All right, Mr. Bailey, you're on.
Well, thankfully, I think you all are familiar with the Riverwalk system, and this project has been in multiple budgets and is federally funded. So we're finally ready to do it. I think you all may remember last fall, we bid this project and had to rebid it for a couple of reasons due to the requirements of the federal funding process. And we now have a successful bidder and are prepared to go to contract and start construction on this long-awaited, really, really exciting project. This will extend the existing Riverwalk where it currently ends at Middle Street and St. Ummo Avenue, right behind, I believe that's 31st Street, Crust Pizza, and a couple of other businesses there on South Broad. And it will continue the Riverwalk Quality Trail System on St. Ummo Avenue, all the way down to Broad Street, where it will cross Broad Street, go down, and end at the incline. So when this project is complete, we'll have a continuous system from the incline all the way up to the Chickamauga Dam, which is a long time coming and really, really fantastic for the community. Been working very, very hard on it for a long time. We're really excited to get started.
Great. That's great news, Blake. And it's good we've reached this point. Is there, you mentioned the contract. The bidder has been determined, right? The winner has been determined. Okay. And when can we anticipate something potentially going on roughly?
We usually take a couple of weeks to execute contracts after assuming that you all are going to approve our resolution tonight to go into contract with Franklin Group to build this project. We should be in construction within, by the end of the month, but I'll be happy to come back to you and give you an exact date.
That would be great. Thank you so much, Blake, for all the hard work that has gone to get us to this point. I'm sure everybody that's been involved with this project is extremely excited. I know my neighbors in St. Emo is. So once again, looking forward to the end of the month where we get that information about when it's actually going to start. So thank you, sir. I'm good, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Black, do we have a visual on that so we could digest it with our eyes?
Certainly. I can get you. I can get you a map. My colleague, I said I didn't think we needed it, but my colleague asked me if I needed a map, and I said, no, thank you. I probably should have said yes, but I will make a map for you and distribute to you.
Very good. The art major would love to see it. Thank you.
Sure.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Bailey about this or anything else? Black, I see on future considerations, amend city code section 24502, speed on through streets, speed awareness initiative. I'm sure that we are waiting on your report on that. When can we expect that?
I do. I would like to make sure I've got enough time to speak with individuals whose districts have streets that we're proposing changes in. I've spoken with about half of you and need to make some phone calls. But to some of the rest of you, because I just want to make sure that we're all comfortable with this. We're trying to slow down drivers in collaboration with the police. And I mentioned that last week and asked for an additional week because many of you were were very busy last week. And so I'll get back to reaching out to each of you individually. And right now, I'm targeting to have that item on the agenda in two weeks.
All right. So we'll hear something if not next week by the 23rd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, folks? If not, thank you, John. And we'll move on to Public Works.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Payne. All right. Hello, Mr. Payne.
Hello again. I'm starting to wonder if somebody has the office pool for how many times I was going to get on your Zoom today. This makes number three.
Well, we have quite a bit here with you for the next two weeks, so we'll start with today's resolutions. Would you please read 7H?
Resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to approve change order number two for HDR Engineering, Inc. relative to contract number W16017101 MBWWTP Solids Process Optimization Implementation Phase Two, a constant decree project for an increased amount of $43,640 for a revised contract amount of $811,769.
I see no hands. I, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to award contract number W19015201 River View Park CGCC Chronic Overfill Elimination Project to Hurst Excavating LLC of Knoxville, Tennessee, in the amount of $3251,518 with a contingency amount of $325,000 for an amount not to exceed $3576,518.
I don't see any hands, but it is District Two. Mr. Payne, how long do you expect this to take?
I do not have the contract term in my hands, but I will certainly get that to you. It is not in the information that I have, and I had not thought to ask that. So it certainly, in terms of starting, we would start typically, takes us about 30 days to get to a pre-construction meeting, and then the contractor is given a notice to proceed. So we would expect them to be starting within the next four or six weeks. But I will get that contract term and let you know.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, please read J.
Resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to award contract number Y20028201 North Chattanooga Head Start Demolition Contract to Tower Construction Company of Chattanooga, Tennessee, in the amount of $53,717 plus a contingency amount of $5,000 for an amount not to exceed $58,717.
All right, I see no hands. Please read K.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to award contract number S19004 USDA NRCSEWP Arbor Creekway to Thomas Brothers of Hickson, Tennessee, in the amount of $1279,270 with a contingency amount of $127,927 for an amount not to exceed $14,7,197.
Councilman Smith, you okay? All right. L, please.
A resolution to amend resolution number 30123 to extend the effective period of the interlock agreement with WWTA regarding the E212 projects for 12 to 24 months, along with other minor modifications as per the attached amended agreement.
All right, then we'll move on now to next week, March 16th, ordinances on first reading. What, please read A and B.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a sanitary sewer easement located in the 1300 block of Anderson Avenue as detailed on the attached map. B, an ordinance closing and abandoning a storm drain easement located in the 1300 block of Anderson Avenue as detailed on the attached map.
Councilperson Coonrod, everything okay?
Everything good. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Let's move to resolutions. 7E, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to approve change order number one final for JDH Company, Inc. relative to contract number W2001201 Replacement Roofing Systems for multiple buildings at MBWWTP for a decreased amount of $8,416.39 to release the remaining contingency amount of $32,000 for a revised contract amount of $303,431.61.
All right, see no hands. F, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to award contract number F20005201 Replacement Roofing System for Fire Station Number One to Foam Creek, Inc. of Chattanooga in the amount of $140,221 plus a contingency amount of $14,000 for an amount not to exceed $154,229.
Okay. All right, let's move to G.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to approve change order number three final for J Company Construction, Inc. of Cookeville, Tennessee, relative to contract number W16013201 Citico Pump Reliability Improvement, a constant decree project for the increased amount of $634,915.71 for a revised contract amount of $10,000, $10,423,398.71.
I think we're getting to our Councilman Smith. All right, please read H.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to award contract number P20004 Power to Protect Public Safety and Generator Backup to Lawson Electric Company, Inc. in the amount of $1,199,370.20 plus a contingency amount of $110,937 for a total amount not to exceed $1220,307.20.
Councilman Byrne, everything okay? All right, thank you. I, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrative for the Department of Public Works to approve change order number four for Jacobs Engineering Group relative to contract number W17006101 Program Management for Constant Decree Implementation, a constant decree project for WRD Operations Staff Augmentation in Year Four of Five Year Program for an increased amount of $239,299.10 for a revised contract amount of $10,187,435.74.
And J.
A resolution authorizing payment to Hamilton County Government relative to City-County jointly owed properties insurance premium 2019 to 2020 in the amount of $25,540.58.
Okay, I see no questions. We're going to move now. Bill, there was a question asked about on future considerations. It's a resolution authorizing payment to TBA in the amount not to exceed $100,000 for administrative costs relative to the pending acquisition of parcel 128B-C-006 for a new law enforcement training center to replace the current facility slated for eventual transfer to the U.S. Park Service to become part of Moncks and Ben National Archaeological District. And Councilman Gilbert's question was, why does that say District Five?
It said District Five because that's the location of the property. The property in question is on Anna Cola, is on Anna Cola Highway. Right, basically right there at the, across from the power center between the railroad and 153. I'm sorry.
As a tip of the fifth district, speaking of.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more questions of Mr. Payne? If not, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it back over to you. Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Ledford?
Sir.
I have down that we do have planning and zoning committee meeting today.
Yes, sir. We'll kick that off right now if you'd like.
Rule of the minutes. Move it.
Okay. With no objection, we will accept those minutes. Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Would you read our one and only item today, case number 2020-0027?
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to rezone the properties located in the 7,000 block of Shalaford Road and 2301 Rivendale Lane for R1 Residential Zone and RTZ Residential Townhouse Zero Lot Line Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse Zero Lot Line Zone for the entire site.
Very good. And that, of course, was our planning. Very good, and that of course was our planning version. Would you go ahead and bring in Mr. Bridger? And while we are waiting on Mr. Bridger to arrive, this is a case we've been working on for quite some time, and I feel like we're getting very close. It is the, the, I affectionately call it the amoeba zoning project as we are now removing parts of. This applicant's request wi- with cooperation with the applicant, so the boundaries are changing. John, I've created a map in conjunction with input. Neighborhood. With the neighborhood of Preston Circle, which I greatly appreciate. Their input and their patience while we work through this, and. If you look at this, this is, yeah, this is the latest update that I drew. It does help to have some graphic skills in my arsenal. If you look at the large blank space to the left of the blue and the orange. That was a critical component to this original zoning case that has now been removed. That was a very, very strong point of conversation, and that will not be in this case. We have now moved from a. Situation where we had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 parcels to be rezoned RTZ with a lot of concerns, and John, if I'm doing your, your presentation. You go ahead and stop me and I'll be quiet, but.
Keep rolling, you're doing good.
Okay, but in, in conversation with residents at Preston Circle, I've listed their addresses up there. At the top, we've listened very carefully, and that, that large section will be removed from this zoning case. That will remain as, as is, and only two of the lots originally slated for RTZ are actually on deck for RTZ now. If you move down, John, you'll see that three spots, lots towards the front of Shallowford Road are now. Asking to be rezoned O1, which I think is exactly what we need as a transition zone. Into, in this particular area, and I believe, John, not to answer for RPA, but your recommendation would have been. To have this as O1 originally.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, I think it's better than C2, because we had concerns about.
Yeah, and, and we have some other conditions, and you'll see at the bottom of the page. And that we also need to add in the, the Rivendale Homeowners Association on the right. We do have a fence that will be. Right, yeah, so we'll be adding that in as well. And, but this has been a, I think a good example of community working with the developer. And ultimately coming up with a plan that, I mean, nothing's ever perfect in life, but I think this is a perfect example of not only community. Input, but community impact. And I think that once we tighten up the conditional language and add in the Rivendale, we would have addressed a lot of concerns. And I do appreciate both parties working patiently and working cooperatively in this particular case, so. John, do you have anything you want to add? I feel like I stole your thunder today.
Well, I think actually you, you, this was something I know you were carrying for quite a while in terms of working with your neighbors, so. Expected that, and I know you've taken full ownership of this, and, and I think just a matter of me and Phil coordinating with you to kind of. Do some final changes to the language. If council members have any questions, I'm be free to, feel free to answer them.
Look, and this will be added in as an alternate case. Version one, I believe is what we are going to title this for next week, and when we have the final details. As, as outlined. I can't see everybody's. If anybody. But if anybody has questions or concerns, let me know. If you have some insight on this, let me know. I'd be glad to. Be glad to, to listen, but right now, John, I am not actually seeing. Any hands, so I think they are going to let me run with the ball.
Agreed.
So with that being said, that brings me to the end of planning and zoning, and we can clock that one as a record probably today.
Definitely.
We, I don't think we need to cover, sorry to work you so hard there, John, today. We already covered the vegetation and strategic planning, so I don't think we need an update on that. We're very clear on our directive. And Chairman, if that is all we have for today in planning and zoning, I will respectfully turn the gavel back to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Great job keeping it short and sweet. That does conclude everything on our agenda this afternoon. So at this time, we will adjourn our agenda session. We'll see everybody back at 6 o'clock.